Alright, good evening, almost evening everyone. Thank you for our slight delay. We were getting some tech assistance from Dan, getting us all set up on some new things for the board. So, thank you Dan for your help for that. So listen, I'd like to call this meeting to order at four twenty-three for the Southwest Tech School Board. Uh, first item on the agenda is a welcome in public comments. So I will welcome everyone. Are there any public comments? Oh, please online for the public at the moment. Tim Jane says, thanks Dan. Thanks. Alright, you're welcome. Moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, first up are the minutes from our last school board meeting on Monday, September eighth. Could I have a motion? Thank you. The second? Second, uh, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the minutes? If not, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No? Thank you, David. Alright, payroll warrants, one thousand nine, thousand eleven, and a thousand twelve. Second? Any, uh, discussion on the payroll warrants? Any questions? Alright, if not, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. Vendor warrants, thousand eight and thousand ten?
Sorry.
Second? Alright, uh, any discussion on the vendor warrants?
Okay, send.
Oh, aye. Oh, Asher, okay then. Thank you, Asher. Um, alright, uh, sorry, so no comments? We'll look for all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions for names? Ben?
Hey, Robin and Roland?
Yes, Asher?
Hmm. I'm ready, let's get y'all on the switch. Let me just pull this over that way. If I want to be here, so that way I can be in the hall and also sit with some lumbar support.
Alright.
Which is always a goal.
Asher's talking to someone else.
Yeah.
Asher, you're unmuted, it's time to your note. Um, we have the cash flow, revenue, expenses, charges report as an FYI. Uh, moving along to committee reports, we have policy, Mr. Wheeler.
Yeah, so, uh, Nicole visited us, had a meeting, and started on social media policy. Um, our next meeting is this week, this Thursday, at four o'clock. So, uh, free to come if one of them has submitted input on the, uh, social media for staff, administration, and volunteers policy. And, uh, we'll start that input, and I'll start hearing it out. Excellent. We also have a, um, policy that we submitted to you before. What on that?
That's in, that's in action, I think.
Yeah, we have the two, the adopting and repealing, yeah. But, uh, yeah, I guess I would also urge anyone that's able to make this week's meeting, especially with the social media input, please, uh, consider coming.
Four o'clock? Alright, I'm thirsty.
Yeah, thanks, Alance. Alright, thank you, Tiffany. Alright, uh, moving right along to the action items. The first up is we are going to, uh, adopt policy forty twenty C, which is on hire. Uh, this was from the morning last month, so it's come back around. Uh, Tim, I don't believe you received any major corrections since the morning.
Have not.
Well, alright, so it has been presented the same as it was the last month. So, um, got a motion, second for discussion, please. So, thank you. Second? Second, okay, thank you. Kevin Martin, by forty. Uh, alright, the discussion on the policy forty twenty C for hiring? Alright, if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Alright, thank you. And then we have the, uh, we're gonna repeal policy forty eighty C. Uh, background checks. Tim, could you just refresh us on why we're repealing this, because this is very important policy?
Yeah, we're repealing it because we folded it into both forty twenty C, so it's now redundant.
Okay, so I'm gonna clarify that. Uh, for everyone that's at home listening, that wonders why we're repealing the background checks policy? Because it's now lumped into the forty twenty C that we've just approved. So, um, could I have a motion and second for this? Thank you. Thank you, Liam. Uh, any discussion on repealing the policy forty eighty C? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions for names? Alright. So, uh, moving right along to the, uh, CIA Student Expo, which is Pathology in Action Field Trip nomination. Uh, Meg?
Yep, this field trip is for our Pathology Program students. It's a hair expo that they attend every year. Um, it was, uh, designed by CTE educators specifically for Pathology students. Students will be introduced to, um, to industry leaders and gain a better understanding of career opportunities in the Pathology profession. Um, along with that, there is a competition that's embedded into this, um, field trip. So students will bring and present their long hair designs for the updo competition. Um, it's an excellent way for students to express their sustainability, well, abilities, while also learning how to accept constructive criticism. Um, as many of you know, when students prepare for their skateboards, um, part of their skateboards in Pathology is the skills portion. Um, you know, uh, so these opportunities allow our students to have some practice in showcasing their skills in front of, um, judges or people that would be, um, reviewing their work. Uh, and that is set for November ninth, um, to November tenth.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion and second for purposes of discussion? Lobos, thank you Fran, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, any discussion on this field trip? I believe this is patent board.
Yep.
And so it's nothing, there's, um, flexing all the.
Yeah.
Motion for it?
Yeah.
And, um, I'm just curious, how many students did it go? Is it the whole class?
The fourteen, yeah.
Oh, right there, thank you.
Yeah. The routine, so a teacher will go as well as, um, our educator, who will drive the bus. I'll say that, yeah.
It's a great, great experience for the kids, for sure. So, alright, uh, any other discussion? Great, uh, if not, all those in favor for the field trip, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Alright, so, very. Alright, next up, we have a nomination for the Skills USA, Ben?
Yep, so this is for our Skills USA advisor position. Um, in the past, we've, um, well, we've, we've done it a couple of different ways. We've had two people do it, who co-advice it. We had one person do it, who takes it on themselves. Um, this year, we would like to try something a little different. Um, Amanda Wagner is our law enforcement instructor, um, who would like to be the advisor along with Tiffany Cook, who's on the screen before you, um, who will help support that position. Um, this position, there's a lot of registration, a lot of paperwork, a lot of organizing, um, that goes into both the state events as well as the, um, national events that our students typically qualify for. There's a lot of fundraising involved. There's a lot of communication with teachers and, um, students around mandatory meetings, um, as well as any, um, fundraising events that they may do as a club. Um, Tiffany would like to be in the clerical role, which would assist Amanda Wagner in, um, doing the, the hands-on student part. Um, they've agreed that because these, the position is split in such a way where it's not technically fifty-fifty, um, that the stipend that, um, is already predetermined by the teacher's contract, um, would be split seventy-five for Ms. Wagner and twenty-five for Ms. Cook.
What's this that, on average, should equal to the hourly? You ever forget?
On average, hourly. Does that equate to? I mean, I guess it depends on the club and how many hours they do, so they all vary.
So what happens is the teacher's contract set a scale based on the CTSO, based on the organization. And back when they set that scale that embedded in the teacher's contract, they gathered information about how many hours are involved. And that is set at a certain point, which is where the stipend comes from. I couldn't tell you today what the hours apart are involved, because it's a contractual, it's already been negotiated and it's been in there. So, we haven't adjusted it. It's been based on every three years when they go for negotiation. So, I am sure this year, when negotiations are starting with the teachers, and they, they looked at again, I can't answer the number of what the hourly rate would be. You know, a lot of it depends on the number of students involved each year. That would depend on a lot of the work that's involved. But each CTSO was based on kind of data that was gathered back during teacher contracts and kind of explanation in front of you, what that would have been during negotiations.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, man. Any other questions?
Of course, we've got their surprise that it's not equally divided and close to that. So change somebody. He, I wouldn't know that this year or whatever, on that line. You couldn't split those, so it's fifty. You need to make sure that it be, um, an item of, first of all, next contract.
And then, but if, if not, uh, motion, second please. Come on. Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any motion, second please. Come on. Alright, thank you Amanda, and thank you Tiffany for filling that role. Next up, superintendent's report.
Okay. I apologize, I do have a number of items for you, uh, this evening, but I wanted to start with a special thank you. Um, and, um, I'll just read it first. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for supporting and approving, and approving our field trip to the nine eleven memorial and museum. This experience was truly unforgettable, not only for me, but especially for my students. Being there in person made the history come alive in a way that no lesson or video ever could. It was emotional, heavy, and eye-opening. And I could see how much it impacted my students as they walked through the exhibits. Many of them told me it gave them a whole new perspective and a deeper understanding of the events of nine eleven. Um, this was from, uh, Ms. Wagner, who's the law enforcement instructor. You guys had approved a field trip for them to go down to New York City. Keep in mind that students were not born when this happened. Um, so they, what they had learned about nine eleven had, has come through, you know, videos or, or the internet somehow, while the adults have told them. Um, so as a result of the field trip, when they got back to school, she had them each write a reflection paper on, um, on that field trip. And I want to read a couple of parts of, of two of the papers that were submitted. Um, the first one, um, states, "Everyone's heard of nine eleven, the terror America felt on that early September morning. But being able to see every piece of the story really helps really show how it affected more than just New York City. The individual stories brought to light the different points of view during this national tragedy. People sometimes forget about the two other planes that hit the Pentagon and crashed into the field in Pennsylvania. This memorial museum brings out more stories from those included, from those, including the final words of some passengers, as well as the transmission accident descent from the pilot on flight ninety-three before it crashed. The exhibit that stood out to me the most was the room inside where the North Tower once stood. You walk into the exhibit, and there's instantly a huge timeline with all the events spread out with times and artifacts that go along with each event. There were phones you could pick up and hear the individual accounts. Being able to hear the absolute terror in those voices really impacted me and showed exactly how these people felt. A story that stood out to me was the story of the window cleaner in the elevator. This man was in one of the express elevators when the plane hit, causing the elevator to stop and start falling. Pulling the emergency stop button, the people cried open the door to see the wall. Knowing what the wall was built with, he used the squeegee handle to start chipping away at the wall, as well as the other people in there helping. When he dropped the squeegee, they began kicking and punching through the wall, until they escaped on the fiftieth floor, leading to them escaping. These individual stories are not often a big priority and are harder to find in class and aren't often shown in movies. Being able to see it in person really helped individualize the victims. I wasn't born when the terrorist attacks of nine eleven happened, but it doesn't change how the emotional, doesn't change how emotional walking through the museum made me. Movies and articles don't do the event justice, in my opinion, till you go to the memorial and museum yourself. The exhibit that stood out and impacted me the most was the biggest, most beautiful piece of art I've seen. Seeing the shades of blue and light purple really caught my eye and drew me in to want to ignore, know more about it and why it's the first thing you see when you get down to ground zero. The piece of art is called "Trying to Remember the Color of the Sky on That September Morning" by the artist Spencer, Spencer Finch. There are two thousand nine hundred and eighty-three individual watercolor tiles that symbolize the individuals that passed away, that passed that day, and their stories that establish the human connection to the tragedy of nine eleven, that honors each person individually. The quote in steel, "No day shall erase you from the memory of time", recognizes the bravery of every first responder and how we will never forget about nine eleven and everything the first responders sacrificed for everyone involved that day. Going beyond the art piece, the museum itself highlighted tragedy, resilience, and incredible acts of heroism by presenting personal belongings, starting from people who passed and did their best to escape, to first responders who did whatever they could to save people who were stuck. The museum presented the last column that bolds the spirit of rescue and recovery workers, who covered the beam and tributes with tributes to re, to represent the bravery and resilience of all who put their time to clean up and recover anything and everything from that tragedy. Um, so please know that, you know, the students and staff know your support, um, but know that when students go out on field trips and various experiences, that they're taking it all in. Um, and I thank you for that. Yeah.
Like there, I mean, this is something that I think should fit in with the program.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that it would be an annual thing, so that all the students will get a chance here to learn something that's in depth about something that took place when I saw.
How do you? Right. Okay. Um. So we held our open house on September twenty-fourth. Um, so we just want to thank all the parents and students who attended, um, and also thank the forestry program for providing, for making and providing apple cider. Um, which was great, that was definitely a hit. Um, on October ninth, we had a successful visit by some board members. We were able to visit, um, forestry, manufacturing and welding technologies, human services, and building trades. And I think it provided you guys an opportunity to talk with students and program instructors and hear about what, um, types of activities they've been, they've been up to while they, while the school has started. Um, forestry and heavy equipment students, as well as some building trades students, have started CDL prep, um, for permits, um, and hopefully eventually their, their, um, CDL license for students that are qualified. Um, at the end of September, uh, a few of us attended a regional V S B A meeting, um, with members of the redistricting, uh, of public school districts. Um, it was basically a question-answer session. Um, I guess I didn't realize that questions had to be sent in beforehand. I thought that, uh, we had an opportunity to ask questions. Um, there wasn't really a lot that was talked about in the realm of CTE. It was more about sort of mapping and, and things like that. I mean, I'm sure guys want to jump in and talk about anything maybe or other, but it was, um.
Yeah. It was about mapping, it felt like, and to be honest, a lot of the, and a lot of the questions were answered with, "We don't know, because we're supposed to do this in four months, and that's our directive, and everything's not ready yet." And it feels, and I've said this all week, right, extremely rushed and not, it really, in my opinion, it was a good meeting to have, but it wasn't, I didn't walk away going like, wow, I know a lot more now. I felt like I still feel like I don't know anything, and it really wasn't CTE-focused. It shouldn't be, but at least mentioned, sorry.
Yeah, so what's your sense at this point, and that, you know, about, um, their attitude towards U technical districts? Are they, you know, suppressed them? Are they, are they happy with them?
I don't know. I mean, I feel like the meetings I've been to, CTE isn't really mentioned much. Um, it's more of a focus on the public end system and figuring them out and not necessarily CTE. So there's still those two ideas around making us a statewide system or melding us into the public end system. Um, but I'm not sure where that's going to. Maybe even the legislative breakfast that we had attended, um, we were, I was invited to legislative breakfast at, um, that S V S U was holding, um, and there wasn't a lot of discussion around CTE.
Well, yeah, we are giving everybody a lot of attention to technical centers and CTE, how we operate. So we're not letting that, this go. If they don't know, we're raising the point each time we're to the meeting about how important technical centers are and how they contribute to the students' well-being in Vermont, and how they should be funded and so forth. So, I'm saying we have, um, I think more than any one board group in one of the meetings that came from this state, regional technical center. And we need to keep that going. So we have other things that are taking place throughout the state, and I'm urging everybody to sign in, chime, uh, something about the CTEs and the technical center support, so that we could, uh, wait to get to scale, wait back in our favor.
Do you have a sense that there's anybody on that committee that's growing up the, um, new mass? Is there anybody that has a vested interest in type qualification? Or are we outsiders that are active, boss?
I didn't get it that way. I mean, I, they, there's people on there, but they're thinking that, oh, they'll mention the word technical center, and that's, that's just it. So we're trying to make sure that they understand it's more than just a word. You know, and, and, and that the system in place is not working the way it's supposed to be to benefit the students, um, in terms of the community and the well-being of, of their life, that would have had hands-on, regular job making and so forth along that line. We're pointing that out because everybody think that it's, it's happening. And we're saying, and as an example, uh, the, it's in the, in the documentation that the, uh, tech students are allowed a technical education. But then it's left up to the school to, to make sure that the students go that way. Well, when you have finances going one way in terms of the home body of the school versus having to dish that money out some other way, you're gonna look at home first. And now I'm saying that that seemed to be what is, is an issue we're trying to eliminate, trying to make technical education equal to everything else out here, and more so because there's a need for the students in a technical area.
Yeah, it seems like right now, we have a relationship built upon it. Well, with, um, uh, high school there, not ending. And if all those high school districts are reshuffled, or does that leave us? Or we have to fold, or, or, you know, things yet to, even, I haven't seen thought of here. Yeah, so working on that? Or we have contacts where there's a conversation going on?
Uh, we can circle back. I'll, I'll let Meg finish her report, but we could, we could bring out a devil conversation for others, if you want, to do.
Um, today, we, um, had a local author visit the forestry program, uh, Bill Sargent. Um, and with him came Senator Seth Bongards, uh, Vermont State Representative Mary Morrissey, Vermont State Representative Will Greer, Vermont State Representative Mike Nygro, um. And Bill was here because he connected with our forestry teacher. Um, Bill is the owner of Hollow Hill Forestry. He also authored, um, Fifty Years of Dirt Forester, um, Always Outside and Never Behind a Desk. Um, this year, we did purchase those books for our forestry two and three students, and they've been, uh, reading chapter by chapter. Um, but it gave us an opportunity to showcase not just forestry. While they were here, I grabbed who I could and gave them a tour of our building and all of our programs, um, you know, so that they can see the, the full skill of what Southwest Tech has to offer. Uh, students, teachers were great about us sort of larding right into their classrooms and talking with the, the legislators, um, around particular issues that they're seeing either in their program, in their career pathway, or simply projects that they are working on. Um, so I think we need more of that, um, you know, to definitely showcase and educate people around what CTE is and what we have to offer. Um, next week, uh, some of us are, uh, attending the, uh, V S B A Annual Conference. Um, and then on November fourth, uh, I was invited to attend the A O E Strategic Planning Retreat, um, in, uh, Kellington, so I'll go into that as well. Um, we also left in front of you, um, our first edition for this year of our newsletter, um, for you to see what some of our programs have been up to since the start of the school year. Um, this year, we're gonna do things a little different. We've, in the past, we have sent it out to, um, our semi-school administrators, as well as school counselors, so that they can learn about what students actually do in their CTE programs. Um, but we're gonna extend that a little bit, um, beyond that and send it home also to families and our local legislators. And that's what I have.
Any questions for Meg? For a board? Okay. Anybody? Um. I'll just, the chair's report has a few quick things. Uh, we did a great thank you for putting together a tour last week. Uh, we had a couple of us show up, so, uh, I think hopefully the next one might be in the late winter timeframe, maybe before our annual meeting. Um, and urge you ladies naked, uh, hopefully we'll tour some entirely different programs.
Yes.
You see, great, awesome. Excellent. Um, you mentioned that we have a regional meeting next week, um. Excited to be going, making sure people understand here about CTE, that, that, too. Um, I'll, I'll also follow up on this, the, the previous time we had about the meeting. Um, I'll, I'll also follow up on this, the, the previous comment we had about the meeting, uh, the Zoom meeting in, in September. Uh, certainly, uh, we know uh ill will to the people who are in charge of this. They're, they're tasked with an enormously impossible feat, I feel like. So I, I, I just felt like personally, I walked out going, they don't know enough to tell us enough what's going on, and they've got to figure out this deadline by, uh, early December, I believe. Uh, but around there, they have to send something to the legislature uh before they enter session, James. So uh, I think the big thing for all of us is if you have questions or concerns, big, um, don't start reaching out to our local legislators. Uh, it's probably too late. There's a legislative luncheon tomorrow at the country club. Uh, I'm going to film it, but if I can catch anyone's ear, I will, I will say something, but I'll be filming it on uh, uh, other purposes. So, um, I also, uh, I guess had the pleasure of, as the chair, fill out a survey on the redistricting for V S B A. And I, I think I told Meg this, the survey was great, but again, the survey felt very not, didn't even really acknowledge C T E. What, how are you discussing? Have you just talked about the other districts about consolidating and all these other questions that just really don't anything apply to us? Uh, so I think it's just making legislators or people at the V S, V S B A aware of the unique challenges of seats, in my opinion, so, um. Uh, but yeah, that's really all I have, except for, uh, Ken brought up that we should have someone who has the ability to be uh voting at V S B A, so, um. I'm happy to give that to Leon since he's had that ability in the past. Uh, if he wants it, I, I, I know we'll, we'll, we'll be there together, so, but, um. Uh, if that requires, although I don't know if we've done that in the past. Um, yes, okay, all right. Well, then, um, could I have a, a motion to give, uh, Leon some ability or powers to have a voting voice for this board at the V S B A next week? Okay, I had first and second, thank you. Any discussion on that? Okay, great. All, all those in favor say aye. Okay, so, okay. Uh, all right, and the next thing is another, I didn't know if we wanted to circle back for you, Tim, I didn't, hey, sorry to interrupt you earlier, but if you had any more thoughts or discussion on the redistricting question.
Yes, my thoughts are that everything is chaotic, and so this is the ideal time for us to add input, right? When things start gelling, then it's really easy to play. So if we, if we want to have a preferred answer to this question for ourselves, um, now's the time to put it in. So I don't know. Have, as a, um, group of technical schools, if we consider whether we want to stay where we are, but if we want to consolidate, want to have a formal arrangement with the uh supervisor union in our local town, want to give the board some time. I hope in our own minds.
I think the, the the Directors Association, we meet monthly, and um, we started polling the group back in February of last year. And the first poll, um. The first poll came out, if I have this correctly, came out pretty much fifty-fifty. Fifty percent of the um career tech ed directors felt that we should be a statewide system, standalone statewide system. Fifty percent said we should be sort of melded into whatever our regional district is going to be once the in our, the public ed system is reorganized. And then fast forward to, let's see, that was February, fast forward to June of that year. Um, we did another poll. And now it was switched to seventy-five percent want, want to be melded into um the public ed redistricting um map system. And twenty-five percent said, you know, statewide. We repolled again. And now it's back to fifty. You know, I think part of the challenge is that within C T E currently, there are four different governance models. There's four of us that are independent, you know, school districts with superintendents. You know, there's another, you know, so many that are joined with a supervisory union. Then there is an, another independent one, and there's a comprehensive high school one. So there's four different models. Um. And to be honest, for me, it depends on the day that you asked me. Um. You know, part of it is because when I think of a statewide system, I think, I think what would be great about a statewide system is common curriculum, common professional development, a lot of things that be, could become more um consistent across the state. But then I worry about how are our regional, how quickly will our regional needs be met? Right? If we have one superintendent who's, say, up in Mount Pili, or one central office up in Mount Pili, how are, are, are our needs really going to be met that way and efficiently and effectively? Um. So, it, yes, so what the, what the Directors Association decided to do was to come up with, um, since we can't really agree, it's still sort of fifty-fifty, it was recommendations to um the Secretary of Education around, okay, if we are a statewide system, these are the non-negotiables. These are what we need to be, you know, a viable system, statewide system. If we are broken out into the regional, you know, public ed system, then this is what we need. Um, so, I mean, I'm not sure. It, it's probably a larger discussion for this board. Um, you know, we went through pros and cons of each scenario. Um, and I think one thing that is difficult is not seeing any data and not seeing any cost analysis around either model. Um, you know, in, in our, actually at our legislative breakfast that we had, you know, the, the question is always posed to me, well, well, what do you think? Which way do you think we should go? And my response is, I feel like someone is telling me to, um, install this brand-new heating technology in my home. But not giving me any of the data or cap, or cost analysis around it. I'm just supposed to do it and hope that that is what works. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I was gonna say, I know, if you don't mind, if I get in, one, I was on that particular board of, of members, and we, this center, just for a little background, real quick, we were, we were joined with Mount Indiana One Center. And the problems that we had is like what I said, representation for students where it followed the money for the students. Now it's still the same problem, who's paying and who's managing the money when you all together at one tech center? Then we split off, we thought we can solve that problem because we were managing our home tech center. But now we start to say, well, we don't get the students like we wanted to get, because they said all the students are, um, 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 have a, an opportunity, are allowed to take technical centers education, but then they don't come from the, the, all of the districts and the numbers that need to be coming to, to meet the needs of the community. So it's a complex system out there. The real problem, it, it doesn't really matter which way it goes, the issue that we have to resolve is how are we managing the students for the local regional area that we're talking about in terms of education and meet those needs? We still having problems with those kind of things. We're still having problems trying to get the enough money to offer the programs that we want to have. So those things need to be resolved regardless of which system that you're under.
Right.
I don't, I'm gonna leave that.
No, I was, I was just saying, uh, because I was wondering about, uh, the minds as well, to be asked how to go on budgets, and how to go on reserves. Uh, was that plan gonna be state-regional or whole to collect? So, good question. That's all.
It's definitely, um, so, I would just, as a board member, I would suggest, um, uh, it's possible to provide some leadership there. What is it that's important? Is it important to us? If we have the same program as one of these human? And it's.
It's, it's based on our regional needs. It's based on what our community needs.
So being able to have a school in response to regional needs, I think it's, or yeah, funding is important. Yeah, one of, where the students will come, I don't know about that, but I think it's really important. So, just, um, even though we don't have any um details, are we gonna um be able to handle that and have control with that if we are our statewide system, or we're gonna have better control of that if we are, um, independent? So what's important was independence or, um, however, yeah, if, you know, thinking that through, even without the details, I think that's really important right now to, um, to make that known, where we see the future in ourselves, trying to get others to help. Other than, um, yeah, that's great.
Right, I can say that, we hear all those things, and so what we gotta do is keep the numbers. So I'm saying to everybody, these things from the Vermont School Board Association, they schedule these meetings, and half of them are Zoom. Twenty-third, they have an opening in terms of resolutions for certain, these things are Zoom. All you have to do is just take, and they have lunch, lunchtime, some of them between twelve and one. That's what we want to get out here, start to ask some more questions so that we'll be heard. Because we, we can't just sit in here and say what we really want in this local, and we're not participating and making our voice heard. And so that's the loudest thing I'm saying here. Get out there and start talking, or say, hey, look, I'm gonna be participating in this conference. Ball in and say you're gonna be there, and then have a chance to spend five or ten minutes talking about what it is that you think you ought wanna, uh, talk about, and then move on. What we need to do more there.
Oh, that's all right. Uh. Yeah, I, I just feel like, uh, hopefully, I would love to see an agenda I do perhaps, maybe next month, that we could provide a little, uh, feedback from what we hear at V S B A, if anything, and if people have more thoughts or questions, I think we can maybe form a somewhat coherent, uh, idea of what we would like and make that voice heard, as, as we've all mentioned. Uh. Anyone, any comments from anyone online? I don't know, John, same name, or ten name?
John's not in there.
John's not in there. I see him though. No comment, that's okay, I was just saying, making sure.
Uh, no, thank you very much, guys. I appreciate, I, I'm, I'm glad I could be here for a few minutes, um. But I'm, I've got all kinds of stuff going on here at home, so I apologize, I had to be online today.
Really? That's all right. I wanted to get, yeah.
I just wonder why our meetings, I don't know more than anything, this morning I looked, they run the S B S U select with how, and they get everything except ours. The purpose of four o'clock meeting is to let people come in and talk with us, and if they don't know what meeting how are they gonna do that? So I, I think someone has to be responsible here to notify the bulletin banner on the Thursday before that our meetings are gonna be held.
Well noted, um.
It does go to the banner, right, Tiffany?
It hasn't been it ever.
Yeah. She sends it to the banner.
Yep.
Uh, yeah. Never end them.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely say that Tiffany is sending it, we'll make sure poke someone at the banner and say, hey, this being also needs to be in there, including all the other ones, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, every meeting that we warn goes to the banner.
Yeah, okay.
Um, anyone else have any other?
I'll show you the journal.
Okay, that's, that's a comment, all right, very good, all right, a second, third, fourth, okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye, great. Uh, we're adjourned, happy Halloween, see you next month. Who?
John?